Good evening. Thank you all for coming this evening. I would like to call the November 10th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Tucker Green will have our invitation. Out of respect, please rise.
If you wouldn't let us pray, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us, Lord. We ask you be with us throughout this meeting, give us wisdom and guidance and direction, and we will follow and go in the way you'd see fit. Lord, we ask for your protection of our students and faculty and community members. Keep every family safe and be with us as we go through this holiday season. All these blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing.
I'm gonna say a word real quick about our veterans for tomorrow. Thank my fellow veterans for your service, and I'll go ahead and start the pledge. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to add my amen to that. I think most of us have family members or friends who have served or are serving in the military. I have had several of those myself, and I am so grateful for those who have served and have given years of their lives, sometimes their lives, so that we can be free and have the opportunity to serve, to say the pledge to the flag, and we have the opportunity to vote, as we did yesterday, the day before. And I'm very grateful to those veterans. Thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Holland for having served as well. The next item is approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do, Madam Chair. I would like to amend the agenda, or ask for a motion to amend the agenda, to remove Item H, Approval of Construction Manager for Pickens High School Fieldhouse, and move Item I up to Item H.
Do I have a motion to make that change in the agenda?
I might have that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Gartrell makes that motion. May I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Mr. Green, is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The agenda has been approved. Next item is recognitions. And Sophie Morgan wins first place in the State 4H Public Speaking Competition. I assume that we have someone here to introduce her. Ms. Tracy Buckingham, thank you very much.
First, I would like to say thank you for giving Pickens County 4H this opportunity to recognize one of our outstanding 4Hers. I'm Tracy Buckingham, a former Pickens County educator and a Pickens County 4H volunteer. Before we get to the start of the show, I will direct your attention to the handout that I provided for you this evening. This is our stakeholder report for the last six months. When we spoke to you last, we were able to tell you that we had two students qualify for state-level competition in their project work, which is a year-long culmination of project work. Both had one district, and they ended up with one winning state being named a master in her area of study and another who placed third. Since we spoke last time, we also had five students who were chosen as state ambassadors for the 4H program. This is one-tenth of all students who were chosen in the state of Georgia. These ambassadors must attend a weekend of training at Rock Eagle, study their given subject area at least with six different sources throughout the year, and make at least six presentations a year. We had a sixth grader who was chosen to present at the Mission Make It Conference, which is a day of technology and STEM study put on by the University of Georgia. We also had a student who made the state finals in the pantry pride contest. Now, I don't want to go into detail about any of those because it's not the purpose of our appearance here tonight. You can find all the details, however, in your stakeholder report. But I do like to tell you these things to say Pickens County 4H might be small, but we are a force to be reckoned with. Now, those awards did not stop with the ones that I just listed. This year, we had a fifth grader enter the public speaking contest at the Georgia National Fair. Something very funny happened to me at that event while I was waiting for her to take the stage. A lady who was sitting next to me asked me a question. She said, "Is Pickens County 4H the powerhouse it once was?" I simply replied, "Well, we do set high standards for our 4Hers." Quietly, I was thinking, wait till Sophie Morgan takes the stage, and you will have the answer to your question. You heard me right. Ms. Sophie Morgan, daughter of Mr. and Ms. Joe Morgan, took the stage and blew everyone out of the water. She walked away a state champion. This is the youngest Pickens County 4H'er ever to gain the title of state champion at the Georgia National Fair. This evening, I would like Sophie to come forward to do her short speech for you, and I think you all will see why she was named a state champion. Sophie.
Hello. My name is Sophie Morgan, and I'm a fifth-grade 4H'er from Pickens County. Now, there's something that most people don't know about me. I'm magic. Now, I know you probably don't believe me, so I'm gonna do some magic on you. Yes, you, and you, and you. I'm gonna perform magic on this whole audience at once. In order for this to work, you must do exactly what I said. Okay, take your right foot and start turning it clockwise. Keep going. Remember, clockwise is this way. Keep turning your right foot clockwise and take your pointer finger and draw a six in the air. Did you feel it? Did you feel how when you drew the six in the air, your foot changed directions? While some people say I have a magical personality, I know I'm not really magic. What just happened there was due to the magical workings of a human body. But I got to thinking about this experiment. It made me think of a whole new way. To me, the foot going around, it's like the world going around on its axis. When one small action's done, it can change the direction of things. Let me explain what I mean. Every day, we see the world going on around us. We see a bully who just pushed someone down. We hear someone that we thought was our friend say something hurtful. We see animals in need or people that are hungry. Wait, don't lose hope. We are 4Hers. When 4Hers see a problem, we don't give up. We remember we pledge our hands to larger service. We do something to change the direction. Recently, my club did a project called Nickels for Nannies. It's where our local senior center does bingo. Whenever they bingo, they win a nickel. At first, I was like, what's the big deal? It's just a nickel. But then I heard the story about the man who had to save up his nickels to pay for his medication. What? He had to save up his nickels to pay for his medication? How sad is that? Like true 4Hers, we started saving up our nickels so nobody would have to go without medicine. I'm here today to challenge you to look around your community, see what you can do to help. Remember, when one small action's done, it can change the direction of things. Now go out, start drawing sixes in the air. Wait, I meant making a difference. What you see will be pure magic.
Tracy, is there anything else you had to say?
No.
Come on up and let's get a picture. That was a great job.
Thank you so much, Sophie. You did a terrific job.
Thank you.
That was very well done.
Can I make a quick comment?
No. Of course.
I see you're a chip off the old block. I knew your grandmother, who was a longtime teacher here at Pickens County, and I know your dad and your mother. And you come from a great family, and you're gonna make them very, very proud you already have. And I only regret that it took three years and 11 months for you to come to a school board meeting to speak. I think we could have you every month.
Very well said, Mr. Green. Thank you. Did a great job.
Thank you.
All right.
We have another event, believe it or not, which we hope you see why Pickens County 4H is a powerhouse.
Did that lady give you any feedback after she was done?
I'm sorry.
Did that lady give you any feedback after she was done?
No, she laughed.
She just gave up, probably. Thank you for sharing Sophie with us. All right, the next item on the agenda is superintendent reports. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a tough act to follow, but Amy's gonna give it her best.
I want to be moved on the agenda. I always have to go behind the kids, and they can outdo me in a heartbeat.
I think you need a hat like that.
I was thinking that when she was up here. I need a hat. That'll cap off my presentation. All right, let's see if we can keep y'all entertained for a minute. General fund, our FY23 general fund revenue collected through the end of October was 18.75%, and our expenditures were 25.48% of our approved budget. Our Fund 150 consolidation reflects the expenditures through the end of October. No transfers have been made at this point. We do have a significant budget amendment coming due to some carryover. We weren't quite ready to bring that to this meeting. We tried to get it in, but didn't have quite enough time by the time we got everything taken care of. We'll have that for you next. Debt service, as always, I'm gonna point out, we have no debt. And our capital outlay, SPOS revenue for October was $739,196.14. Interest earned was $1,791.94. Our expenditures totaled $1,294,051.30, bringing our month-end SPOS balance to $8,389,000... What? See, she did better than me. In special revenue, we've collected 13.39% of our budgeted revenue and expended 28.08% of our budgeted expenditures. Always gonna point out on that, we have to spend the money before we can get the revenue back in. It is a grant where we have to spend those funds and then request our reimbursement. Do y'all have any questions? Just to give you an update on some audit issues. Every year now, because of our revenue in SPOS increasing to over $5 million per year, we are required to have a SPOS audit. So we have contracted with Maltin and Jenkins. They will be conducting that audit November 23rd, Thanksgiving week. It's all good though. We are almost, actually, we have almost everything prepared for them. We do it digitally. They stay off-site. But they will be answering some questions, and they will give you the final feedback probably in December, but it could be January, just depending on when they get it wrapped up. We'll keep you posted on the results from that audit.
Will they send those via email like the other audits?
Theirs is a little different. They actually will send it to the superintendent. I get a copy. I'm copied on it, but it's addressed to the board and the superintendent. So I don't think they send it directly to you. They will send it to the superintendent, who will disperse it to you. But you will get a copy. Any other questions?
Thank you. I'm gonna hear from Mr. Wallace. Mr. Gilligan had an appointment and was unable to make it this evening, but Mr. Wallace is gonna give our operations and construction report. Mr. Wallace?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Young. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to deliver this to you this evening. Start out with our maintenance department, just give you a couple of highlights. Wanted to include a few facts there about kind of what we've done so far this school year. CalLED up our 614 total maintenance requests from school maintenance items thus far this year. I am tracking those just so we can get an idea of where, you know, our needs are and where we might need to focus in the future. So that's a lot for eight gentlemen who work very diligently every day to take care of. They do a great job for us, and I'm appreciative of them. Also put in there so you could see, we're asking a lot of them also to help with driving buses. We have several of them that are CDL certified, so licensed. So two of them are driving, or three of them are driving almost every day right now because we are in a time when we need them, and they're helping out. And they do so without complaining, and I'm very appreciative of that. Obviously, our goal is to create a safe environment for our students and staff to come into every day in each of our facilities. We've got a wide array of operations that we're trying to keep running every day. We have a great support system, of course, and a great team to make that happen. So very appreciative of them and the time that they're putting in and the team player attitude. So very busy, as always, and has been as the start of school. Has come and gone, and I want to give you an update of what they're doing. From the transportation department, we run 118 scheduled routes each day, 59 a.m., 59 p.m., but seven of those are double routes. So we're doubling those up as needed and as we're able to do to make it work out with the schedule with elementary to junior high, elementary, middle to junior high and high school. Got seven different drivers doing that. As is the case with the maintenance department, we're asking others in transportation, like our fleet mechanics and our office staff who are CDL drivers, to step in and help us out. Also, we've asked several people to get on the bus and ride us monitors. I've done that several days. I know we've asked Ms. Bone has done that one day or a couple of days for us. Anybody, you know, that has a phone that answers. They're getting wise to our numbers, I think, by now. But we call and try to make sure these kids are taken care of. And obviously, we don't want to leave the parents in a lurch and not be able to get them to and from when they depend on us. So trying to do that also. Got midday routes going. Got field trips, extracurricular sports. And we're also trying to do with the shortened staff, and sometimes it interrupts the regular route, so it's really hard to juggle that. But the office staff, mechanics, drivers, monitor, I can't say enough about how hard everybody's working to try to team up and make it all happen so that we can meet the needs of our students and the parents who depend on us every day, and also our goal of creating a safe environment for them traveling. From Beth in the school nutrition department, she wanted me to deliver the free introduced percentages. October 31st numbers have been determined and submitted to our state department. Our official free introduced percentage is 44.4%. The administrative review, which is conducted by the Georgia Department of Educational, or Education School Nutrition Program, will be here the week of March 13th, 20... I believe that's going to be 2023. The scope of the review is two primary components. Critical areas of review and general areas of review. The critical areas focus on certification and benefit issuance process, accuracy of meal counting and claiming, and compliance with the meal pattern and nutritional quality requirements. The general areas focus on civil rights, onsite monitoring, local school wellness policy, all food sold on school campuses during school day, professional standards, water, food safety, reporting, record-keeping, outreach, and resource management. So that's the update from school nutrition. Later in the meeting, there'll be an action item regarding the approval of the natural gas contract for the district. So be looking for that later on in the meeting. Any questions I can answer for anybody? The construction updates, we did get CO on the Ag Center, Ag facility down at Pickens High School, and that big project is wrapping up, and we're really excited and proud of that facility. And we will be looking to get with you guys on a dedication date soon. So like to make that happen pretty soon. Whenever you guys are available to make it happen, we'll let the folks at Carol Daniel know.
Are we waiting anything at the Ag facility at the high school?
So the only two major items that we have yet to do are the pins that are, you know, they're already quoted and designed and all that. I'm not sure what the lead time is, but they have given us the quote. That will be working through Carol Daniel, and the company, I believe it's Prefort, that supplies those and they're top-quality. So that will be one thing that'll take a while. It's a lot. There's a lot of pins for this project. 33,000 pounds in shipping weights. That gives you an idea of what we're dealing with there. And then audio/video equipment for the arena to have PA system and the big classroom to have either projectors or monitors in there for, you know, classes to display, because it's a big room. We need a couple of those. So we are in the process of bidding that out. We got one bid, and we're waiting on another. Come in so we can kind of compare and see what it's gonna take to do that. But that's pretty much it. It's ready to go. Down there today. They were putting signs on the doorways and are finishing up the signage to label the restroom and stuff like that. So really not much holding us up at this point.
The pins and audio/video, was that part of the original GMP? Or is that gonna have to be, we're gonna have to come back to it?
So the pins were part of the original GMP. The audio/video was not something that was discussed till right toward the end of the project. But I believe that we are gonna have enough in the contingency fund. I know we're gonna have enough in the contingency fund because there's not really anything else to use that for that we know of. So we're gonna have that opportunity there. We don't have to come out of pocket necessarily. It's already factored in. We'll be able to use and tap into that balance, and there will still be a balance left, a significant balance.
What about classroom furniture for the classroom component?
I believe that that was, I don't believe that was included in the GMP. I think that's tables, chairs, so that they can rearrange and change that as needed. But now, I'm in on the backside of that, so I'm not 100% sure. I'll check on that and find out. But that won't be a ton of stuff. I know things like, a couple of other things that we're waiting on are appliances. Some of that stuff's just supply chain, waiting to get some of those appliances in the kitchen area and the concession area. That's the only other thing I can think of. But we don't have furniture in there yet, so I will find out about that. I'm not 100% sure if that was in the original. I would think that some of that, unless there's something specialized that they didn't think about or they didn't know that they wanted, would be in there to start with. So I'll follow up on that, but not sure on the original. Getting in on until the end of this, so I'm not 100% sure about that.
Thank you. And do you know about the installation of the greenhouse at the junior high? Is that complete? I know they were very close.
Very close. They poured concrete last week around the exterior, and they've been working inside. I know that they were waiting on the component and didn't know it shipped and got here because I physically saw it. I think it was a thermostat control or something like that. So the netting or the webbing's over it now, sunscreen and stuff. I think everything's done, maybe a few little components inside. But it looks 95-plus percent of the way there if it's not already there. So yeah, we're getting really close with that. And so we got a lot of nice stuff. Very fortunate to have the things that we have, and we've been able to construct over, especially the last few years. So now we gotta make sure we maintain it, take care of it, and keep it nice and new.
Thank you. Appreciate some of the daddy included on this report, too.
Yes, sir. I just wanted you guys to see how hard these people are working. We depend on them every day, and I'm really appreciative of everybody's pulling extra duties and hours as they can. And we got a few people down right now in transportation as far as some illness and things like that. So we hope to get those back sooner than later, as soon as possible, and keep those folks in thoughts if they recover from a couple of surgeries. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your support. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Goodman is gonna talk to us about a curriculum update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Young. We had a pretty exciting day on Tuesday, and I wanted to thank everyone who showed up. We had 124 teachers who attended our literacy symposium. I've asked around. I know I'm pretty new here, but I think it's the first literacy symposium we've had in Pickens County. And we were excited to see that almost half of our teachers came to that. The presenters were teachers and school leaders, academic coaches, assistant principals. Those were the presenters at the Semahova Symposium. We were hoping that they could learn from their peers, find some new and innovative ways to engage our students in literacy and get excited about learning. I want to give a shout-out to the presenters. They were Amy Priest, Brittany Gaddis, Shelley Youngblood, Dr. Connie Nelson, Danielle Hendricks, Jennifer Sarowitz, Canyon Petty, Kayla Colbreath, Kim Karen, Kristin Newton, Megan Albertson, Dr. Rosemary Nelson, Suzette Herman, and Una Smith. And they did a fabulous job. I also want to thank Dr. Flat and his staff for allowing us to use his facility and the teachers' classrooms. That was very generous of them. All of the school administrators came out to support their teacher leaders and the presenters. That was wonderful. And then we also had many sponsors, both locally and from our national vendors, who provided sweatbags and door prizes for the teachers. So it was a pretty good day. Thank you. We did send out an anonymous feedback survey to see if they feel that they learned something, if they would like to do this again, some of their interests that they wanted. And I just wanted to read a couple of the comments. It was anonymous, which I was excited about. I just want to hear general feedback. But here are a few of the quotes. "I was so thankful I went to three sessions." There were, that's how many there were, three. "There were pieces of each presentation that made my takeout notes and back to my classroom," whatever. So she took some things home, I guess. "And then, 'Thank you for the opportunity to be a student in several great teachers' classes.'" I thought that was a nice one. A couple other quotes we have were, "Teachers had the freedom to share." "I love that our peers were presenting. They brought so many ideas to the table." "And I love that it was current teachers. It made it more relevant and useful." So I think overall, it was a pretty good success. And they did, we asked them to provide us suggestions on future symposiums if they would be interested, and they gave us a lot of ideas, behavior, content, arts and humanities, all different kinds of things they wanted. So it's pretty good. So we're working on the next one. Speaking of literacy, I want to give a shout-out to JMS and Mr. Thompson. They were, as I talked about Thinking Maps last time, they were the first school to roll it out. So they are the ones that are now first ready to kind of showcase it and have a walkthrough. He invited all school administrators and leaders, the academic coaches again, and the assistant principals and principals to do walkthroughs to see how his teachers were doing. And this is just the first 11 weeks. Basically, they were trained in August and early September, so it's even less than that. But we saw some amazing things. He has a 30-minute block carved out in the morning where every single teacher works on ELA in literacy, just for that, so that we can make sure that every single child can reach that proficiency level that we've been talking about in literacy. So that was really nice to see all the administrators come out for that. Mr. Thompson and Ms. Hamilton also shared that they had been using Thinking Maps with their leadership team and were making sure that they use that to do some visual representations and organization on their school improvement plan. So that was really exciting to see that. And then finally, November is Family Engagement Month, and Ms. Schop had posted "Tell Us Something Good" on Pickens Facebook page for the families to give shout-outs about their favorite things about schools. If you haven't seen that yet, there were some amazing things that our parents have said about the schools, the staff, the teachers, the front desk, everybody. They mentioned everybody, so it's really great. And so just remember, Parent Engagement Month. Anything we can do to help our families, to help our kids, we want to get out there and do that. So do you have any questions? Thank you.
I did have programs if you...
Thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Goodman. That concludes my reports. Madam Chair?
All right, thank you very much. Now we have action items. The first one is the approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
So, Madam Chair, say.
Okay, Mr. Gartrell, and then Mr. Smith, maybe second. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Gartrell and then Mr. Smith, maybe second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports that Ms. Smith presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is five oh. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is naming of the Pickens High School Agricultural Facility. Mr. Young, do you have a recommendation for the naming of the Ag Facility?
I do, Madam Chair. As everyone is aware, construction on our new Ag Facility has pretty much reached completion and we are ready for a moment that we've all been anxiously waiting for. The top Ag facility in the state of Georgia needs a name to match. And so, tonight, Madam Chair, I'm asking that the board approve that name as the Barnes Family Agricultural Facility. The contributions of this family to agriculture, not just in Pickens County, but in surrounding counties as well, is hard to put into words. And it's my honor tonight for ask for this, to ask for this motion. I can personally say that Jack Barnes was my Ag teacher about 10 years ago. I guess it was now. And I worked with Jerry Barnes and I worked for Johnny Barnes. So, I, I have, I have experienced all, all three of those. There are other family members as well, some other board members we may want to speak to, but it is an honor to bring that motion to the board tonight.
I'll make the motion. We name the PHS Agricultural Facility the Barnes Family Agricultural Facility.
Okay.
And I will second that motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Green and Mr. Gartrell seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a few comments. I'm very proud that the board has given this family that great honor. I've, I've had the privilege of knowing this family most of my life and, and working with some of them in different capacities. But for those of you that don't know, this family truly, I would say, anything to do with agriculture and probably North Georgia, they have had a hand in it one way or another in the last 60-plus years. Jack Barnes was a longtime agriculture teacher at Pickens High School. Johnny Barnes was a longtime Ag teacher at Gilmer High School. Jerry Barnes was a Farm Bureau agent. They're, they're farmers themselves. They were charter members of both Pickens and Gilmer County FFA Alumni Association, Cowman Members Association, everything you could think of. They have given back, serving on boards, rec departments, commissioner, a number of ways. It was generational. I was talking a while back to Joe Wright, another former high school agriculture teacher. He told me he recalled, and I can't remember her name, Tony, you may know it, but he said he recalled the Barnes brothers' mother.
Sue.
Ms. Sue Barnes, being involved in the concession stand when those boys were little and taking people to shows. And I called, I thought this was thing two, and again, just shows the, the amount of people they've touched. I was, I happened to be on my way to a political event Monday and I had called Sheila Barnes Elrod to tell her. And she, she missed me, so she called me back. Well, I had a fellow lobbyist with me who was from Gilmer County. And so, she overheard the conversation and she said, she immediately knew who we were talking about. And she said, "I was the first female in Gilmer County to, to show livestock. And Johnny Barnes was my teacher and allowed me to do it." And she said, "And Jerry Barnes and Sheila," because they had Sheila that showed livestock, "they took me to Perry, Georgia to show livestock." I don't know how long, 40 years ago. So, the, the family has been great members to this community and to agriculture and very deserving honor. I'm glad we're, we're extending that to them.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Not having grown up in this county, it's, it's wonderful to hear these stories and to feel a little, a little bit closer to, to their family. And I appreciate everything that they've done. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I'm just grateful for the family's contributions. I, I couldn't add a lot to what Tucker had to say, though I've known the family forever, Mom.
Well, I certainly.
I'll add something.
Okay.
Back in my days as a tech and one of the first few years I was at Pickens High School, he was the only teacher that was allowed to keep a Windows 98 machine. For security reasons, when we went to Windows XP, he got to keep his, his device until he retired.
I know.
That was his last request. So, I'm honored.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I certainly do appreciate everything this family's done and it's, it's had quite an impact on a lot of students over the years. And that's what it's all about. Certainly is. And I think naming the facility after them is certainly something that is, is honored. It's something that, that needs to be done. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. We've had discussion. All in favor? The vote is five oh and the motion passes unanimously. The facility will be named the Barnes Family Agricultural Facility. Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of the Pickens County School District 2023-2024 School Year Calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the Pickens County School District calendar for next year as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion?
I, I would just say, I'm sure we can get this calendar out to the media folks because I'm sure y'all want to promote that. But the calendar is basically, replicates the same calendar we've been doing for a number of years. There's no major changes.
Right. Would you like to add any comments to that? Superintendent Young?
No. Like Tucker says, it's, it's, it's pretty much the calendar that we've been rolling with for the last couple of years. I want to thank my leadership team, principals. We, we talked about it and it's, it's been a good calendar for us.
Okay. I, I think in conversations past, you also indicated that it does correlate with Cherokee County's calendar.
It does. Breaks. Breaks matchup, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I am glad that we're going ahead and rolling it out now. I understand from being a parent, that it is important to get this done, to get it locked down so that parents can get their vacations requested when they're at work and you're trying to get that taken care of, that it's important to get that, to get that locked down. So, I'm glad to get this, to get this voted in and so the parents can have that information. All right. Anything else anyone would like to say? All right. All in favor? Vote is five oh. Calendar has been approved for next year. We will get that information to, to the media. It will be on our website as well. The next item is a request for a new policy. Policy IKBC. Material harmful to minors complaint resolution process. Do I have a motion to place the new policy IKBC, material harmful to minors complaint resolution process out for public review until the next regular monthly board meeting as presented?
I might have a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gartrell.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Smith. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Is this another policy update in response to state law?
It is. This, this is the last of the, of the group that came out of the last session. This one has to be in place by January 1 of 23. And, and we just took the language straight out of the law in GSVA and the state BOE and had, had our attorney check it out. So, yeah, this, this is another one of those mandated policies.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Vote is five oh. And this passes unanimously. This will be out for public review until the next regularly scheduled monthly board meeting. The next item is a request to authorize Superintendent to sign intergovernmental agreement between Pickens County, Georgia and the Pickens County School District, 339 West Church Street location. Do I have a motion to authorize Superintendent Young to sign the intergovernmental agreement between Pickens County, Georgia and the Pickens County School District concerning the 339 West Church Street Jasper, Georgia location as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And I got the second from Mr. Holland. Okay, I would like to make a clarification that this will be for a five-year term. All right, Mr. Smith and Mr. Holland, are you still okay with your motion and your second?
That's it.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Just for clarification, this is the same, this is the same footprint, same agreement we've had. We're just extending the agreement five years.
Yes, sir. It is, it's the, the location, I call it the old high school. I need to quit doing that. But it's the old high school and it's the agreement that we have with, with Sheriff's Department. Same, same exact agreement, only change is in the renewal of the terms, changing the dates.
First degree is five years. This is a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're rolling that over. So, any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is five oh. I will say, some people call that the old high school. Some of us call it the old middle school.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta quit and say I'm part of that JMS, man. Let me say. Old habits of day.
The next item is the approval of the natural gas contract for one year. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
Ms. Wallace, have you got those numbers to share with us?
Yes, sir. We have four, four bids. This is for the term of December 1st, 2020, our December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023. And the bid that is being recommended by Mr. Gillen is 0.563 per term, so 56.3 cents per term for 12 months. And that is through true natural, true natural gas.
Okay.
Ms. Wallace, is that an increase, decrease from prior year?
From my understanding, that's about 13 cents per term increase over what we were in this year. And the bids range from 0.563 up to 0.6193. So.
Inflation.
Yes.
Did they have the contract last year?
I believe we were with true natural gas. This, currently, we are, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, even though it's higher, it's still below the bids, so.
And we did have four, four bidders, four, four companies.
Got to keep the schools heated. Got to have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Do I have a motion to approve the natural gas contract with true natural gas for a rate of 0.563 per term for 12 months as recommended?
So, Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is five oh. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item is item H on our amended agenda, which is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 3rd, 2022 Call of Board Meeting at 5:00 p.m.? The October 13th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting is 6:00 p.m. The October 28th, 2022 Call of Board Meeting at 1:00 p.m. The November 20, November 4th, 2022 Call of Board Meeting at 2:00 p.m. as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gartrell? All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I just left on October 28th, though it listed as college name, which is technically correct. That was a one session.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is five oh and passes unanimously. All right. Roman numeral number eight is public participation. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have not, Madam Chair.
All right. Next item is board comments. Anyone else to say?
It seems early, but the year slipped up on us. I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving because we have no meeting scheduled again before Thanksgiving. Thank you for what you do and have a happy, exciting Thanksgiving, everyone.
We certainly do. I appreciate you. All right. The next item is to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We are adjourned at 6:46 p.m.